All right, thanks. First up, do we have any adjustments to the agenda this evening? No, not hearing any. We will proceed as warned.
I don't know if it's an adjustment or not, but I just wanted to make a note that I was in attendance for the November 10th meeting.
The minutes say that you are, and you are. Just trying to look at what is.
I don't think there was mention of Raylene either.
You know, it's actually funny that I'm looking at the minutes now. And though for a moment, I'll say we're moving on to the to the minutes. Part of the part of the agenda. Yeah, there's there's a the minutes should be corrected to show that Raylene was absent because she is not on the present list, but is also not in the absent list.
Yeah, I yeah, so I'll make that adjustment and send it probably tomorrow.
All right, great. Is there anything else that anyone noticed?
Yeah, it wasn't absent. I was there.
Oh, you were present. Okay, it was a while ago, so I didn't I didn't quite remember. All right. So so you're just missing from the present list.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Amendment amended. All right, great. So then, if there aren't any other changes that we can make to the minutes, we could have a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, great. We've got a Amanda the motion and railing the second. Thank. All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? All opposed? All right. Yes, the motion has passed unanimously. Minutes are approved. Next on our agenda is opportunity for the public to comment about anything that is not on the agenda. It would not appear that any members of the public are here remotely. Janet, is there anybody there in council chambers?
Only myself.
Okay, all right. And we move. Sorry, I lost my place. Move on to our new business. We're going to get an update on our grants, which may or may not be much of an update. I don't know. It's mostly just a placeholder to say, how are we doing at these? Yeah, go ahead, Janet.
Sure. We got the grant for the bylaw modernization application for a total of twenty seven five. Nicholas signed it last week. It was in your packet. So I have started an RFP to get that out the door to start getting somebody on the hook to start helping us right away. As you can see, we have an award end date of January thirty first, twenty twenty five. If we meet that award end date, we end up not needing to spend the the two thousand five hundred or it it ends up being like a weird reimbursement. So if we meet the award details, we look just that much better. So pretty excited. We got this one. I was in communication with Michael and Amanda earlier in the week, and I'll let you know. The rest of you, I have not heard a word yet on the municipal planning grant application. I'm wondering if we probably won't get it, but you just never know. It's a different. It's a different source of funds from the same organization and a different a different request, but I haven't heard anything on that one yet. So still still in pause mode. So so yeah, that's the updates on our two grant applications.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that? Yes, David, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just curious. There's probably a lot of activity, people seeking consultants for this kind of work. Do you have any sense, Janet, of how easy it's going to be to find people to respond to the RFP?
I think it's going to be hard because even with the other grants that I'm managing, it's hard to find consultants. Everybody in every profession, shall we say, is stretched really thin. I'm hoping that at least Brandy takes a look at it. I'm hoping that there's room in the Regional Planning Commission's senior planning staff to help us out. Because we're not asking for an overhaul of the zoning. We just did that. We're very specifically looking to tweak a handful of things, right? We want to talk about housing. We want to talk about parking. We want to make sure we get the density right. So I'm hoping someone can spend some time with us. Waterbury was also a recipient of the grant, and I don't think anyone else was down here in the center of Vermont area. So we've got that going for us.
And we can, Amanda, go ahead.
Janet, how much of this work can be done remotely?
You know, I honestly think almost all of this could be done remotely. Even maybe not anything that we decide to present to the community, like we did a community forum. Our consultant on the zoning overhaul, we did a couple presentations of it alumni hall. We've done things remotely at Alumni Hall as well. Council works very well remotely. We work very well remotely. I think there's better participation since we've all gone remote. People are more apt to join and listen and and I think the lion's share of this is going to be done remotely.
Thank you. With that in mind, does it make sense to give the RFP a wider circulation than we might have in the past? But could the consultants be, I realize they might not have Vermont specific information to hand, but could they conceivably be from even outside New England?
It could be. I am going to use the list that ACCD has on their website of consultants that do this kind of work. And I honestly don't know how many. I want to say there's at least ten consultants that are listed all over the state of Vermont, top to bottom. So even if we got somebody from the Bennington area, I don't see any hindrance in that at all.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I was going to say that we can keep the RFP open for a while. So right, there's there's not like a I mean, we have to use the money within the, like you were saying, two years. And so it's not like we were trying to find someone in a window of like a month and a half or something, right?
Correct, correct. And if you want, I can. Do you want to comment on the RFP? You want to you want to do that next month? Have a draft ready or circulate that among all of you? Just just for an extra set of eyes as I move on through this process. I'm happy to do it.
I think that sounds beneficial. David, read.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about an RFP that it probably shouldn't be open ended. Unless unless we're allowed to do an RFP until filled, because we really can't start doing any work until we have a consultant. So it seemed to me that maybe there should be a deadline. And then if there's no no responses, you know, we have to kind of go back to the drawing board. But I wouldn't, I don't think leaving it open for months is going to generate any more things, but the RFP might speak to how soon the work has to start or flexibility with that.
I don't think we meant it was going to be open ended. I think we meant we don't have to get it out like in the next two weeks to get somebody on the hook in the next four weeks. It's we don't need to move like we're we're under a granite stone.
Okay.
Yeah, what I meant was that you know, some funding needs to get out the door right away, and we would lose the opportunity to spend it if it didn't happen in that time. But we have the luxury of having a bit of a longer runway. That's all I meant. Did anybody else have anything for this agenda item? All right. And we will move on to new business five two, which is reviewing input regarding parking policy that's being considered by the legislature. And this for us is really just it's just to just to review what is, you know, what's being given as some of the input. And it's to give us a sense of what other people are thinking about in terms of parking policy. I did not read all of the text that is provided to us. Thank you for highlighting the parts of it that were, you know, the ones that were called out to for us to pay attention to, Janet.
Sure. Yeah.
Did you want to run with this? Yeah, go ahead.
You can get going out Tuesday. I expect any of you to read all ninety pages for sure. But but as you can see through some of the legislative reports from the VPA, there's a there's been a bill that's been introduced and has gotten a lot of attention through the Planners Association and recognizing the housing crisis and trying to tweak things and make things work easier. Parking is always always a hot topic. Mike Miller, who used to work here, testified last week about parking. I'm not sure if his the recording of his testimony is on the Senate page yet. It wasn't as of Tuesday afternoon. They were still behind postings. So I tried to grab as many VPA legislative reports I could for you folks to see the conversations that are going on around housing that include parking, reducing those parking minimums, allow asking to be able to do minimums and maximums. So.
We're fortunate to have one of our representatives to the State House here with us, and he's got his hand up. So if no one minds, I'm gonna I'm gonna call on Representative Anthony to, you know, to give his two cents.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to tell you. I may have mentioned this to Janet at a different context. Burlington Burlington is moving towards instead of insisting on a minimum number of spaces per unit, actually moving towards a maximum number. So obviously, the field is is now moving towards away from the traditional minimum set aside for parking for a variety of density reasons and aesthetic reasons, I should add.
Yeah, thanks. And and as I was interested to see how much discussion there was around this around this issue, it's I'm surprised to see the VPA coming in to say, we're worried that if we don't allow people to have a minimum parking over over one space per unit, that it will be it'll be somehow bad. But I'm not a not a member of the VPA, so I don't, you know, doesn't reflect me, I suppose. David, go ahead.
Yeah, this bill is a major, major bill with housing stuff, and I did spend some time looking through, and I actually saw a draft this summer of some of the things. So parking is really kind of a small piece of of the whole thing. It deals with density and and lot size and making duplexes allowed in any zoning district. Some of the things are things we've talked about. Some of the things are are additional things. But there's a lot in it. I'm curious to hear from Representative Anthony, what kind of reactions there are. I know there's a House bill as well. I don't know if that one is being that the House is waiting for the Senate to send something over or or kind of what activity, but I, you know, on the one hand, I've always thought that local control is important. And and a bill like this is is going counter that to that. But on the other hand, a state level kind of activity is is one of the only ways to make sure that that housing can be available in communities throughout the state and not have allow some communities to have very restrictive zoning and kind of close the gate behind them. So it's it's kind of a challenge to balance those things. And I'm just and the other thing that that I kind of observe is sometimes Act two fifty also impacts housing sorts of things. And there's some things in there addressing Act two fifty, but perhaps there should be some other things. So I'll stop talking now, but I'm curious to hear what Representative Anthony can fill us in on.
Well, thank you, David. It is a bit early for me to just do justice to your question. I will tell you that I have received a couple of calls from friends. Interestingly, one in Barrytown, who says, how dare you? What's going on here? We don't do top down zoning from the legislature. But I believe the hearing cycle is very early on, David, and and members of the commission. So I would what I would tell you is is a very preliminary read, but you're absolutely right. There is some pushback. I have not heard the league take a particular position. I expect they would if they heard enough strong reaction from their membership. I just saw Karen Horn today in another context, and I didn't get the sense that she was exercised about that. Now, mind you, it may be most of the sparks are happening in the Senate at the moment, and so I'm not I'm not seeing them or hearing them. But I will, now that you've asked me, I will ask around and see. I I I think you put your finger on it, though, David, in the sense that there is an equity question here. There's no question, but what's some some communities, generally speaking, better off communities have have used R ten as an exclusionary tactic and three acre zoning and so on. I don't think anybody argues that that is not happening. The question is, what is it that the state, what's the state's proper role in that? But notice, if that's allowed to go on, there certainly is an equity issue in terms of the need for housing, in terms of where it's going to go and what it's going to look like. So I will ask around, but you're you're perfectly right, that I think it will not be a stroll in the park for the state to change its role in in that arena.
Thank you. Amanda, you had your hand up. Did you? All right.
Wasn't actually anything that interesting or relevant, so.
All right, just just wanted to, you know, make sure I didn't miss you. Yeah, I I haven't read through all of this bill. I mean, I have no awareness of it. I pay almost no attention to stuff that happens at the state level to my, you know, unending, perhaps failure, is the right word. Yeah, ignominy. I don't know. But it seems to me like we would want, I would like for us to be ahead of some of these things, to not have them be imposed from the state, but to do them because they are the right policy. You know, for our grant list and for our growth in the future. There's there's two hands up. I'm gonna kind of let Becky go.
Thanks. I was just gonna jump in. Vermont edition yesterday was all about this bill and Morrisville's experience with changing their zoning in order to get more housing. And they did that a few years ago, and so they're already, they've built a bunch of housing. It was a really great conversation. I didn't catch all of it, but what I heard addressed a lot of the issues that we've been talking about and some of the issues that have been raised to just in the last few minutes about what does this mean for our communities and for the state? So it was a good good backgrounder on these issues.
I've been meaning to to look at it, but I haven't. Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, just just briefly. Yeah, I think what you said earlier about sort of us wanting to get ahead of the good changes ourselves, I think is really important. But also, just generally, I would sort of think that this seems like it could have some impact on you know, this stuff we're looking at with with that that grant we were just talking about. So it seems like this could impact some of that in some ways. I don't think we, I think it's too early to know that for sure. But it definitely seems like something to sort of keep an eye on as another factor.
David.
Yeah, I would kind of echo what Joe just said, but I I would suggest people don't have to read it really carefully, but it's worth going through the bill. Because it's in a way, it's a good chunk of a roadmap of what we're going to be doing when we hire a consultant. You know, all those issues that we've been talking about are touched in that bill and, you know, some we some idea of thinking about it. So while I don't think we should use the bill as the template for changes we make, and we should try to get ahead of it. It's just a useful tool to kind of use as a roadmap.
Representative Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Michael. I can't let go of not mentioning, I'm sorry, the double negative. I want to mention that Jake is very interested in what the connection between the demands on our infrastructure and the creation of grand list. And so that fits, if you will, in in terms of rethinking. If someone walked in with a fairly large scale development proposal, and it was all single family, and it was all quarter acre lots. And it was not handy in terms of the existing infrastructure of water and wastewater investment. It should be true. I'm saying something that Jake would say, I think. So I'll take ownership of it. But I think he'd say, you know, is that really the wisest use of our remaining wastewater capacity? And is it the wisest use of acreage that we're only limited to four square miles in the city of Barry? What's what's the acceptable acceptable threshold between adding to the cost of servicing lots as opposed to the value that's created on those lots as we go forward? I think it's a fair question and not one that I I confess the Planning Commission in times past has actually posed as the way Mayor Hemmerich has, and I've just tried to articulate.
Fortunately, it is something that we have considered exactly in that form before, because we did have a proposal to change zoning to support just that sort of development. But in the context of that development, as I recall, there was a a proposal to to, you know, have the city underwrite a bond to create the the streets that would serve that development. And our concern as the planning commission was, well, like, are we going to be stuck with those costs forever when we don't get the the revenue that we expect from that kind of development? And I think what I remember, remember the consensus being was if it pays for itself, like if you, you know, if you build all that stuff, and it's going to create that infrastructure, then we're typically for it. But then we don't want to be in the place where we we chase development that has us lose money in the long term. And I think that that's what you're talking about, Peter. But what we were thinking about here is parking. And so we don't have to necessarily address it particularly in detail, but my takeaway was there, in terms of the parking limits, there's a proposed limit to say dwelling units may not you know, have a minimum of more than one one parking space per dwelling unit. And I say, that sounds so conservative as like a as a change. That's that seems totally fine to me, because somebody wants to build more parking, they can. They're just saying is we shouldn't have municipalities say you must build this amount. But I don't know. I think I think maybe, you know, I read the read the wrong planning publications, maybe. Yes, Amanda.
I would just add to that. I'm sure Representative Anthony can speak much more to this. But having been sort of listening to some of the housing conversations in and around the State House, there's a lot of conversation about encouraging zoning changes that will allow more housing, more than there has been in a very long time, and that some of those zoning changes are coming our way, whatever they might be. There's, as David said, there's a lot more in this bill than just the parking requirements. I, you know, in stimming it, I saw a number of things that are going to affect other pieces of our zoning and other things like that. So obviously, it's still relatively early days to the session, but I would I would submit to the group that this particular bill is authored and sponsored by the Chair of General Housing, etc. So this this bill or something like it is, it's going to come through. I don't see this one falling off the board. So I can give you, I mean, every planning commission in the state of Vermont to keep an eye on on what this looks like and glancing it. Thank you, Becky, for the reference to the Vermont edition. I dropped the link in the chat, and they had Representative Bongarts from Manchester, who is sponsoring, also sponsoring a housing bill in the House. So there's going to be some kind of crossover omnibus housing bill, and based on the chatter about we have to make sure zoning allows more than it currently does, there are absolutely going to be some state down zoning recommendations and changes. This remains to be seen with this.
Yeah, I think that that makes a lot of sense, and we will definitely definitely have this come in front of us again. Well, do we have anything else? Amanda, sorry, I didn't see. Please continue. Go ahead.
Out of something apologies, because we've got a lot of turnover in planning in recent months. There are commissioners here who were not present when we sort of briefly touched on the question of parking minimums before in planning mission. So I wonder if it might be useful to completely restate a current parking minimum situation for those here. So what would change with this law? And we can, at the future time, have have conversations around the the pros and cons of that, but just for context.
Do we have new members since then? I thought that was something we all talked about. It was almost, but I think I thought I thought everyone was there for that. Well.
About half of it turned over. I mean, new members, correct me if I am wrong, but my memory says we've got about half of a new planning question since then.
Yeah, well, I don't remember. So I think that I think Janet would have to to tell us what I mean, what the current minimums are. I mean, the 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 proposal that I've been trying to move toward is that we don't need the minimums at all. And that was when we brought it up. And in and if that's if that's I really thought that I told that to everybody here. But but what I was saying was that there's a there's, you know, the process of the market will deciding whether they want to have apartments with parking or they don't. It really, I mean, that sorts out whether or not the parking is made available. And if the parking is always, you know, is required to be there by the government, which is to say, you know, city council, then that just adds price to everyone. And I, to everyone who does not need need a parking space. And so it's one of these things where it seems to me like the more efficient way of allocating parking is to have the people who want it pay for it. And that's that's where I was coming from when I was bringing it up originally. We definitely do have parking minimums for for residential. We and we do for some kinds of commercial uses also. And this is where I don't remember the details. So Janet, feel free to to jump in if you if you want. Or you could just say, I don't know either right now. So.
I do know. It's that's the kind of stuff that lives in my brain now. So single family homes, you need at least, I think it's two spaces. So the assumption is a single family home has two adults with two cars. An apartment building is based on the number of bedrooms. So one bedroom, one parking space for any additional bedroom is point two spaces. So which seems really silly, but that's the way the planners figure things out. And that starts to add up when you have a multi-family building. Is if you've got four apartments, if you've got, you know, seven bedrooms, all of a sudden, you need a lot more parking than you thought you would. So and then our commercial parking is it's not identical to what it was, but it's it's based on square footage. And it's it's not as much, like I said, it's not as much as it was, you know, like a shopping mall that's got a three thousand square foot store needs X amount of parking spaces. That's been reduced, but those numbers are still really high. And I can always what I've been thinking about is breaking down our zoning ordinance by pieces and parts rather than having to click on the whole zoning ordinance. You can go look at the dimensional table, or you can go just look at the use table. And I think this will be And I think this will be beneficial for anybody because, you know, Barry's saying, this is what we're all talking about right now and to have a parking page pages easily clickable. I think that's what I'm going to do. And post that on our website.
Yeah, that sounds useful. Amanda?
So my previous memory also is that to some degree, we had tabled this conversation, Janet, because there was going to be a further oh, I'm sorry, I realized my microphone is not making this up very well right now. The wrong microphone. I'm sorry. That's probably better. Okay, I have like five microphones attached to this computer at any given time and it finds a new one every single time I log into Zoom. Okay. Starting over, my memory of our previous conversation is that it was set aside to some degree because the question of how to handle winter parking had not yet been settled and that the parking committee of the city was going to be meeting at some point. And that was a topic of discussion. Has have any of those conversations happened yet, Janet?
Oh, yes, yes. And we asked the Public Works Department how they felt about doing a pilot. And Billy Hearn came up with three neighborhood sites. He wanted to do the test at the end of the end of the parking season, shall we say, so it would be the month of March, essentially. We talked about how to get that information out to those neighborhoods. And I think what's happened is it's been put on hold till the beginning of this this fall. Carol and I felt that, you know, doing something really fast and not well thought out is it wouldn't be beneficial to residents who who can park on the street when there's no snow and, you know, they're used to moving their car is is to do it, roll it out, roll out the test the right way. Just to those neighborhoods and say, look, this is what we're going to try to do. And and yeah, like I said, it was it's been put on hold. So it's not going to happen in this part winter parking ban session. It's going to occur this fall.
So thank you for that update. So it does sound like if we were to really tackle this, there's plenty of runway to get a winter parking plan for next year that would integrate with with changes to the parking minimums.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was recalling that the meeting when we last talked about it was one where I gave people sections of Planning Magazine. There was there were case studies on parking. So if there's anyone who is now a commissioner who was not there then, let me know and I can give you exactly those files or even Janet could because that was in the packet. But I, you know, I really thought we were all there then. So anyhow.
So our newest members are Becky, Rosemary and Ryleen.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
I remember that conversation. I mean, I was here for it. Yeah.
Yeah, I I believe I was as well.
Okay. And if you ever want to, I mean, if we know the date, they're still all on the website under the agenda packet. Those haven't been.
It's in August. It's in August last year, August or July is what I think. Anyhow. Good, good. I'm glad I'm glad we were all together then. I thought maybe my, you know, it's getting like Swiss cheese in the brain or something. Okay, do we have anything else on this topic? Where we're considering, thinking about the upcoming legislation? Our relation to that in terms of parking? Okay, nice. Amanda says it was August 25th. Rosemary, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Just generally speaking about all these changes from Montpelier. I mean, if we, the planning commission decided we weren't so keen on having Montpelier tell us what to do. Do we have an option in our community and our our commission to end up operating the same way we do?
I mean, the short answer is no, because if there's a state law, it applies to us. My understanding is we could, if we wanted to send a letter for them to consider, much as the VPA does, we could draft a letter and then, you know, move to to send it from the planning commission if we wanted to. But I I think that that would be it.
Well, I'm not necessarily suggesting I oppose any of it. I'm just wondering if we have as a body have the option to bow out. I mean, charter change or anything like that. I'm just curious. That's I suppose we can talk about that when the time comes.
No, keep in mind, any zoning changes, final draft that goes in front of city council also gets sent to the state and gets sent to the Regional Planning Commission. The Regional Planning Commission looks for compatibility among municipalities. So everybody that we touch and that touches us, we all we all should be compatible with. And we don't want to end up being an island saying, you know, we're going to do this because that's what we want to do. The state's going to wholeheartedly say, you're not following what we want you to do.
I guess I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
I can't read that. I'm sorry.
Oh, it was a message from Representative Anthony. It says, if the ban becomes weather responsive, it might be useful to put in a chit, it says, against one-time monies for the warning, flashing light announcing winter parking ban in effect. I see. So it would, there would just be, you know, the possibility of spending money for signage that says it's it's happening. Well, we have, we have many possibilities. Like in Burlington, I think, yeah, right. Well, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. There's lots of lots of strategies for for how we could, how we can get rid of our superannuated winter parking ban. Did anyone else have anything to add for this item on the agenda? All right. In that case, we have nothing else other than confirming the date of our next meeting, which is scheduled for March 9. Becky?
Well, can I just ask about the zoning changes we have made a while ago that we're going to city council?
Certainly.
Like where those are in the process?
Fortunately, we're now in staff updates if everybody thinks March 9 is okay. And I think Janet can totally tell us about where those things are in staff. That sound good?
I I I apologize. It's just I need to move it up on my to do. I really do. Yeah. I promise I'll get it going. They should be relatively easy, right? I just I need to get them. I need to get it going. So my apologies.
It's not just you. I mean, if, because I think there could be, you know, there could be pulling from city council, there could be, you know, you know, Nicholas could be involved. So really, it's, you know, it's not, it's not solely on your shoulders for it to it to be delayed.
Yes, and I I was just wondering, I don't know, I don't fully understand the process. So I was more just wanting to understand than anything else.
I think it is on Janet's plate to send it to city council. But if they really, if they really wanted it, they could be nagging her. I could be nagging her too, I suppose, right? All right, but I choose not to for the most part. All right, in staff updates, we have some items that are provided in the packet. Does anyone have any questions about, I'm trying to get to the bottom of this thing. It's so long. Hang on a second. Any questions about what is what's in our list? Or is there anything you, any clarifications that you wanted to add, Janet?
Let's see, did I? I don't remember if I said DRB is going to be talking about the Pinstley Depot subdivision. Yeah, I did. Okay.
And it says that the DRB is being asked to to reconsider the that, sorry, the St. Monica's?
Yes, so this, this, I'll explain to the planning commission what I've announced. I have not had a chance. I need to reach out individually to each of the DRB members. But attorneys like to use the word reconsideration. And only the courts can do that. So St. Monica's attorney wants the DRB to reconsider. In other words, hear it again. And if they don't, and that's not really a procedure. Only the environmental court. What will happen is I say, no, the DRB is not is not interested in reconsidering it at this point. It will go to the environmental court and then if the environmental court tells the attorneys to tell Berry City DRB to reconsider, that's that's when a reconsideration happens. I think what the attorneys are hoping for is that they don't have to go the next step to have it turn around and come back to the Berry City DRB. But I need to poll each and every member of the DRB separately to see, you know, what their temperature is before I can get back to the city attorney. So that's all that meant. And for some of your planning commission members who may or may not remember what that was, the DRB was asked to approve demolition of a tiny little empty house that's on the other side of St. Monica's. It used to be used for their rectory. And it's been empty forever. They wanted demolish it and make one of their older student groups like a separate playground away from the littles. And the DRB said, no, you didn't meet the requirements of proving to us why you needed, why you want to demolish it. And so they appealed it, St. Monica's appealed it, which they have that ability to do and they are hoping to, clearly, they've done their homework now. So they are hoping that it can be reconsidered and they're hoping to do it as this step before it goes to environmental court to then be passed back down. So so that's all that meant in a long-winded, roundabout way. I think it's going to be back in front of the DRB, whether we do it now or whether we wait for environmental court to tell us, we've got to hear it again.
Well, it's it's hard for me to imagine how the outcome could be different considering that they answered the questions about the things that apply very clearly during the hearing. But I guess that's that's on them.
Yes. They have done their work to meet what the zoning regulations asked for. They've done the the test, so to speak. So.
That's peculiar. Was there anything else in the updates that we'd like to like to address? Amanda?
I'm happy to step aside and wait my turn. So I have a question about a previous staff update. Some some things that were brought up at previous meetings can do this now or at roundtable. I will leave it up to the chair to decide.
I think now is fine. Go ahead.
Janet, I'm hoping for updates on the the Thuing Mill and the Italian Baptist Church. I know the Thuing Mill was was sold and is being considered for development. And there was a gentleman involved, interested in submitting a demolition permit for the Italian Baptist Church. So I don't know if either of those two have moved forward.
No. So what was your first one besides the place I?
Sorry, that it was, it's Hill Martin most recently. It's owned by the Allen family, the the Thuing Mill?
No, it is owned by Butera and Sons.
And they were considering develop, I guess I'm just wondering if they've submitted any any permits or requested any permits for development or anything like that?
No, I just keep hearing rumors that, you know, they're going to store some granite in there. They're going to use the place to use as a training facility for future granite carvers. But I haven't heard anything, haven't seen anything. I remind people like Eiffel Wall comes in quite a bit and they have a working, they do a lot of work for Butera and Sons. That, you know, the the brick building itself is the historical structure. So remember that when you guys are all talking. So and the Italian Baptist Church, Mr. Harrington is, so here's something that, you know, there's a couple of things with our zoning that we're probably going to have to include as we talk wholeheartedly about our changes. Mr. Harrington is frustrated because commercial storage is not allowed where that building is. And what he wanted to do, when he first came to me, he said, well, why can't I run out little areas where people can store their tires? Or or store their motorcycle over the winter? And I said, because the zoning line from, I think it's UC2 and MU1 divides between the gas station and the Italian Baptist Church. So then he asked me which part of the building was historic? Was it the original and the addition? And I I said, honestly, I don't know the answer to that. You need to know that as the owner and I haven't heard from him since. But that's something that he'd like to do. And other than demolish it and make his parking lot bigger, and I told him, there's no way you're going to get an approval for that. That is, that is, you know, one of the first historic buildings in the city.
Yeah, just to just as a note, Janet, I did look it up. The the National Register nomination does not specify addition or original building. It's the entire structure, as far as I can tell from the National Register nomination. So.
Really? Okay. Well, good. That's good to know. So when he does eventually call me and he hasn't done his portion of this homework, I can say it's the whole structure.
That's I I'm to tell you what, Janet, I'll send you the National Register paperwork because I dug it up out of curiosity. But I read it through and it does not seem to differentiate because I'm just that person. Sorry. It does not seem to differentiate between original and addition. It just describes the entire structure. So.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. The frustrating part for him also is because there is no curb cut for that property. There is no parking. And I had asked him, why can't he just let some of the parking that goes with the with the 802 spirits in the gas station be used for I use in that building? And he said he needs all that parking for his workers and such. So yeah. So he's frustrated. I don't know if changing the zoning to allow some other uses. He didn't come up with any uses, potential uses for the structure himself. But maybe changing the zoning lines where it's not in MU1, maybe it's, I don't know, we'd have to look at it, be led down the path of is this the right type of change? Until he comes up with a better use or we have suggestions. That's that's the lay of the land currently.
David? Oh, sorry, Amanda. Yeah, go ahead, David.
Yep, just curious if there's any update on filling vacant staff positions.
I have just this week, ironically, you asked, two applications for the permanent administrator position. So we'll see what happens.
Well, good luck.
Thank you. And for all my other positions, there have been no applicants. Unfortunately.
Anything else for staff updates? All right. We'll move on to our roundtable, right? Oh, yeah, totally. Does anyone have anything that they would like to information, whatever they like to bring to the commission as part of the roundtable? Just you can raise your hand, a hand and go ahead if you like. Oh, yes, Janet, go ahead.
I just wanted to let you all know that city council meetings are now twice a month. So there's no council meeting next week. So something to keep your eye on.
Well, that seems reasonable.
Yes.
Great.
Is that a permanent change?
I think it's going to be, or as much as Nicholas can can move that forward. Charter says they only need to meet twice a month. So he's hoping to get back to what the charter says.
Well, I'm in favor of this. Good for them. I'm in favor of this. Good for them. Excuse me, sorry. All right, well, if there's nothing else for roundtable, then I would hear a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn. Oh, David, you can have it. I got, I got the minutes, you can have that one.
Okay.
And do we have a second?
I'll second it though there.
All right, great, yeah. David and Amanda. All right, motion to adjourn. All in favor, raise your hand or say aye. All right, that is unanimous. Thanks a lot, everyone. We are adjourned. Have a nice evening and, you know, don't go outside, it looks gross out there.
It's vile. Janet, I hope your drive home is safe.
Thank you, bye.